All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to our March 11th, 2019 Public Meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in recognition under our judicial authority and trust.
Okay, may I have a motion for consideration of the closed in public meeting minutes of February 25th?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Here.
We're voting on that?
Yes, sorry.
We were all called before.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigscals?
Yes.
Vice President Morticay?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next up our Student Liaison Report.
So, we don't have much to report on, but so just about the delayed schools. Cody has legislation pushing through for the later school start times. Around, in our specific county, the average start time is around 8 o'clock. And I think we're the only school that starts at 7:30, and we start earliest. So if possible, and I know Cody's pushing for 8:30, if we change, it'll definitely be a benefit for all students because we will get more hours of sleep in overall. It'll be a better...
I just want to say it'd be easier or smoother transition if this legislation does get pushed instead of jumping from 7:30 to 8:30. Maybe gradually 7:45 or 8 o'clock. It'd just be an easier transition as a district. And Mr. Robertson made a point several times about sending out a survey to parents, and we're in the process of making and sending it out, and finding out if we can send it through Navions and also through mail. And we want to see how parents will respond and how this can affect parents' schedules and childcare, and how this shift would affect them especially. And we will be meeting with Ms. DeMendez, I believe, in the coming few weeks to discuss other logistics and realities. Yeah. And we've contacted middle school student councils and set up times to meet with student representatives, so at least we have a broader range of representation and hear all the districts' voices. And yeah, and as we know, the budget season is coming up, so we wanted to make sure that the ABL system's on the buses, that's still on the table, and there's still room in the budget to install those and to make sure those are ready for next year.
Okay, thank you. Ms. DeMendez?
Good evening. So regarding the delayed high school start, as I communicated earlier, we were meeting with our Transportation Committee. We met again last week. We're going to meet with you, I think it's the 26th of March, I believe, to give you some parameters for you to help us figure out how we're going to possibly make it happen. Right now, some of those parameters are really focused on dismissal. So we are finding all of the different scenarios that we can put in play to make it work for the whole district. So in order for your committee to effectively look at the data, we're going to need to give you all of the district data so that you could see how it affects the middle school, how it affects elementary, how it affects leaving school, not just entry, how it would impact late buses, how it would impact budget, and how it impacts routes. So for example, one route, if it's a single route, it would be at one cost; if it's a double route, it would be at a different cost. So we really need to think about the whole picture, right? So when we meet, we're going to give you all of our parameters so that you can see what's in our thinking and so that we could work through some scenarios together. With regard to the systems being placed on the bus for the geo-mapping, we're still working with that. We have put it in this budget. So whichever company we end up going with, it is in this budget. And so we will be moving forward. We're just still interviewing different people to make sure that we make the right choice because there's a lot of products out there. We want to make sure we get the right one and that they're compatible with not only our buses, but compatible with the system that we have that runs our buses.
Any board member discussion? Mrs. Merklinger?
No.
Mr. Robertson?
No, just great job. Thank you for continuing to push this ahead and to stay focused, and you've made a lot of progress already. Thank you.
Mrs. Trigscals?
Well, former Governor Cody was here the other day, of course, and so it's wonderful that he's West Orange-based, and we're already on the cutting edge here at West Orange High School. So I talked to him about our fabulous liaisons, 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 hello? And that you were on it, and that we can probably help him with his pilot. We're so advanced.
Right.
Just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and this was great research, and continue keeping up the good work here.
And I'll echo that. Thank you very much. I'll just point out any survey that gets done, I think, is, we have to make sure for the elementaries especially, it goes home in backpacks as well, with maybe just a simple URL on it that shortens, that takes them right to the survey as well, because obviously we don't have Navions there, and we want to make sure we're getting everyone and not just those who are, you know, hooked up on school messenger. All right, thank you. Superintendent Report.
Great, so to begin the Superintendent Report, we have a presentation that's going to be made by Lera Trevincian Higgins regarding our audit for 2017-18, so I'm going to ask the board to go into the audience. Oh, we can stay here? Okay, perfect. Even better.
Good evening. My name is Donna Jaffet. I'm a partner with the firm of Lera Trevincian Higgins. I am here to present the audit for the year-end June 30th, 2018. As you're all aware, the annual audit is required to be done by state statute. For fiscal year 2018, you may recall that normally I'm here in November, December to present the audit. Unfortunately, this year, the district was required to implement a new Government Accounting Standards Board called GASB-75, which was the accounting and financial reporting of other post-employment benefits. We were waiting for the information to be provided from the State of New Jersey. Unfortunately, the information was not provided until January of 2019, which delayed the whole audit release process. So the audit was submitted to all the regulatory agencies before the revised filing date of February 28th, 2019. And at this point, the audit and all related documents have been properly filed with all the regulatory agencies. The audit itself actually produces two documents, the first being the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the financial statements, the footnotes, and all required supplementary information. It also produces something called the Auditor's Manager Report, which summarizes all the audit findings and recommendations. So if I may first just kind of go through the auditor's opinion, we have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the West Orange Board of Education as of and for the fiscal year-end June 30th, 2018. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the County Principles Generally Accepted in the United States of America. Our responsibility as the auditor is to express opinions on these financial statements. We conduct their audit in accordance with Audit Standards Generally Accepted in the United States of America, standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards, as well as audit requirements prescribed by the Office of School Finance, Department of Education for State of New Jersey. I'm happy to report the district has once again received an unmodified audit opinion, also known as a clean opinion, which means in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly. Within the auditor's opinion this year, we also included a paragraph of an emphasis of a matter which discusses the implementation of the Government Accounting Standards Board 75, as I mentioned before, which is the accounting of financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. As you may be aware of, the plan is actually administered by the State of New Jersey, so West Orange School District does not pay into the other post-employment benefits. It's all paid on behalf of the district by the state at this point. So if I may, I'll move on to the finances. I'll be looking at the governmental funds balance sheet as of June 30th, 2018. This is the first page of the synopsis, or if you happen to have the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, it's page 27. So I'll be focusing first on the general fund, which is the chief operating fund of the school district. It's where the majority of the transactions are accounted for. At June 30th, the district ended the year with total fund balance of $2,985,941, which is an increase of about $1.7 million from the prior year. This increase is largely, mostly, in fact, about $1 million of it is due to additional state aid the district was allotted during 1718 in the form of equalization aid. Of that $2.9 million, $2.5 million of it has actually been earmarked and used in the current year budget you're in, the 1819 budget. $504,000 of it has been set aside for capital reserve. This is to help fund the local share of some of the school facility projects you have. $359,000 is open orders. And the unassigned fund balance on a GAAP basis is a deficit of $377,000. This deficit does not mean the district is in any financial difficulties. These statements are actually on a GAAP basis, and as you may recall from prior years, the state actually delays the last June state aid payment, as well as your extraordinary aid. So there's an additional $2.5 million in state aid that you do not receive until the next school year. So on a budgetary basis, your unassigned fund balance is actually in the positive of $2.1 million. I would like to mention, though, that $2.1 million is below the maximum you're allowed to have. The district is allowed to hold 2% of operating expenditures, which here represents $3.1 million. So you're well below that 2% maximum you're allowed to have. So if I may, I'll move on to the recommendations, which if you're following along with the synopsis, it's the third page of the synopsis, or if you have the Auditor's Manager Report, it's page 13. So what I'll do is I'll read the recommendations, and I'll just give you a brief summary of what they entail. So under Financial Planning and Accounting Reporting, we're recommending the district maintain its level of effort with respect to special education expenditures funded from state and/or local funds in accordance with federal IDA grant program compliance requirements. The district is subject to federal single audit, which requires that we look at certain federal programs where you expend large dollar amounts. So one of the programs that we looked at this year during 1718 was IDEA. So when we were looking at that, one of the compliance requirements requires that we make sure the district is not supplanting local funds with federal funds. In other words, you have to spend more in special education costs each year than you spent in the prior year. And unfortunately, in 1718, that was not the case for the district. They actually saw a reduction in the special ed costs paid by state and local funds. We do not consider this to be a significant deficiency nor a material weakness. It's a compliance matter with the program. Under Student Body Activities, we're recommending that all checks written from the high school athletic and liberty, middle school athletic accounts contain two authorized signatures. We had instances where the checks were issued with either one or no authorization signatures. Payment Authorization Request Forms for the high school athletic account contain all required proper approval signatures. Currently, the request form requires that the form be approved by the director, and we noticed instances where there were no approval signature. It's important to mention, this is actually a repeat recommendation. It was cited in prior year audit as well. Supporting documentation be obtained for all disbursements made from the high school athletic account. We had instances noted where there was either no or incomplete supporting documentation attached to the payment request. All checks issued from the Edison Middle School account be written in sequential order. We noted there was a block of checks issued in May and June that were actually issued out of sequence. So as I mentioned, a review was performed on all prior recommendations, and corrective action was taken on all but one with the student activities for payment authorization requests. I see on the agenda that the corrective action plan is on for your consideration this evening. I have reviewed it and found the planned procedures to be acceptable to address the issues. So at this time, if anyone on the board has any questions?
Great, thank you. Mrs. Merklinger, you can start.
No questions at this time.
Mr. Robertson?
None, thank you.
Mrs. Trigscals?
No, thank you.
Ms. Morticay?
Yes, thank you. I note that pretty much every year, we have the same issue, the student activities account. Are there any suggestions you can make? And this year, it seems to be just the three schools, so that's an improvement over past years.
I was just going to say, let me preface by saying, there has been a vast improvement. In the prior years, we had more, I think in the range of 10 recommendations just in this area. So it has really improved, and it has, as you said, been isolated really to just two schools predominantly, or two accounts, I should say, predominantly. So there has been an improvement. We work with Mr. Calavano and his staff on a regular basis, trying to come up with ideas of how to improve the control so that you don't continue to see these. And the good news is, the repeats are going away. So it looks like there is corrective action being taken.
I know Mr. Calavano has met with the staff, the cabinet, in the past to talk about this, but is there a checklist, a check sheet? And I know in the case of the sequential checks, apparently there were two boxes, and one box was open and the other one was skipped, or something. Are there any procedures that can be put in place just to make sure?
We can absolutely work with Mr. Calavano to develop something like that, to give to them. It's one of those areas, the student activities, you know, as an auditor, it's one of the areas that we most commonly have problems with.
But not to have any signatures or backup documentation is an issue?
That is an issue.
So Mrs. Morticay, regarding that account with no signatures, I'm at a point now where I requested that before a check gets sent out, it comes to my office with all the backup, I'll review it, make sure the backup's there, and make sure the other signature's there. When I see the one signature there, I'll sign it and release the check. That's the point we're at right now, because that's the only way we're going to resolve these issues.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I have one question, and it may be more for Mr. Calavano, is it ordinary that our bank would be going ahead and paying on checks that have no signatures on them?
I guess they've been doing that.
Do we know how many there were like this? Was it kind of a one-off accident, or is this a three or four?
Three or four, I would say.
Okay, and that's out of roughly, I assume a lot, I'm just...
Probably hundreds. Probably hundreds. And to be honest, just from my experience, a lot of times, banks do not look at checks under a certain dollar threshold. They just don't have the manpower to do that.
Gotcha.
A lot of these checks are smaller dollar amounts. They're just flowing through.
Good to know. Okay, that's it for the audit. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, back to Ms. DeMendez.
Just a few highlights. Today, I had the opportunity, along with Elizabeth Venesiano, our Acting Assistant Superintendent of Curricular Instruction, to participate in viewing our ELAPD building independent writers in our primary grades. We went into the classroom. I think there were 30 teachers in the district that were in the classroom observing the consultant, Christine Legata, as she modeled fostering independence for our kindergarten students over at Hazel. It was a demo lesson conducted in Jason Roberts' classroom. It was an excellent experience. The teachers then came out to debrief. So kudos to our teachers who are participating in this job embedded opportunity for training. Denise D. Martinez, our supervisor of ELA at the elementary school, they're doing a great job. This is one of the different series of professional learning opportunities that we have in ELA that are taking place. On Friday, Governor Murphy was with us. We were happy to have him here to conduct his press conference, where West Orange was awarded an additional $1.6 million, which we will use to offset, yes, right, offset some of our budget. Sunday, rain and all, we were able to participate in the St. Patrick's Day Parade at the town. It was excellent. So with Ms. Morticay, and Mr. Alper, and Ms. Merklinger, we were able to weather the rain and really just support the Mountaineers. They did a great job with the flags, and our step team, and our kids, and all of the sports who were out there. So it was wonderful showmanship for the community. On the 8th was International Women's Day, so we just want to cheer on our women, specifically our teachers in our classroom. So something we tweeted out this week, "To all of our women who teach with strength and lead our younger girls into their future, fully equipped with purpose, preparedness, and unshakable confidence, we give you honor, value, respect, and gratitude." So thank you to our women leaders. And that's it. Here's our HIB report. Any questions? That concludes the Superintendent Report.
Do you want to plug that Twitter account, by the way?
I think it is.
I saw the professional development on that today.
All right, so I'm just learning how to tweet. I had to be taught. So it's @deMendezEvony, and so I'm learning how to be socially engaged alongside our students and really promote all the wonderful things that are happening in the district.
And a lot of our district events are hashtagged with W-O-the number-two world, W-O-two world. So if you search for that on Twitter, you'll find, I think, everyone probably, or hopefully everyone in the district who's tweeting.
Right, and mine is #WeAreWestOrange. So hashtag #WeAreWestOrange. All right, oh, look, they're twittering now.
All right.
So, thank you.
Okay, up next, questions from the public on agenda items only. If you'd like to speak to us on any agenda item, come on up to the microphone, let us know your name and your address. You'll have three minutes on the clock. If you're going to ask about anything, or if you find out after you've spoken that you're going to need more feedback, or some answers from the administration, there's a clipboard right there that you can optionally put your name, topic, and contact information on, and Ms. DeMendez will be able to get back to you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is James Rawls. I live at 46 Warren Road. I'm currently president of the High School Football Booster Club, the Mountaineer In-Zone Club. So thank you for the opportunity to provide comments regarding the recommendation to hire Darnell Grant as the new head football coach. But before those comments, I think it's also important to thank and acknowledge the service and tenure of Jim Isakis. He had some significant accomplishments here, such as our first divisional title, and facilitating the recruitment of Division I, II, and III players, and helping many others pursue a college education via football. However, his time has passed, and we are ready for the next chapter, but we will continue to build upon those successes. Darnell Grant is the man to lead the program as we begin writing that new chapter. If you were to create a list of must-haves and a coach for West Orange, Mr. Grant checks every box. His success on the field and off the field is well documented. And when you meet him, you are very impressed with his passion for the sport, knowledge of the game, and dedication to his craft. This is just not my own opinion, but the opinion of many other coaches around the state who I've either directly or indirectly spoken with about his coaching skills and resume. They agree that he is the right man for the job at West Orange. So your vote tonight in favor of his hire will send a clear signal to our football players, our high school, and our community that a new day has arrived for West Orange football. As those in the audience who agree with me, and if you support his hire, I ask that you please raise your hand, so everyone understands that we highly support this recommendation. So you won't be alone in your vote. You have the town, the booster club, and the administration behind you. I also want to thank our administration, Acting Superintendent DeMendez, Principal Moore, Edie Bly, for organizing and leading this search effort. I was someone who was involved and directly worked with them, and I want to commend them on doing an excellent job. You are truly committed to West Orange and seeing us succeed in all our efforts. Overall, the citizens of West Orange should be aware of the tremendous effort, careful due diligence, professionalism, and dedication that was on full display throughout this search process. We got our man, and let's make it official tonight. Thank you.
Ron Bly, Athletic Director. I'd like to take exception to the comments made by our auditor. And tomorrow, I plan on having a long meeting with Mr. Calafano. I've been trying to get this meeting for quite some time, okay? To process the checks the way Mr. Calafano is asking is very, very impractical, okay? Now, during this time period that the audit was done, we had to switch banks, and when the bank account was switched, there was many, many problems, including signatures on checks. And Mr. Alper, I feel the same way. You do. It is the bank's responsibility to make sure a signature's on a check, okay? I really don't know when that happened, but Mr. Calafano, tomorrow, I'm going to ask you just one thing, that if you want to go forward with this process, I want you to know it's not real practical, okay? But could we at least be able to write checks and give them to the fellows that officiate games that day? I will take full responsibility for a log for the officials' checks. It's really not fair to those guys. If you want a check when we send our dues into an organization or something like that, I'm all for you. But the everyday process of paying officials, that would put a real detriment in the whole process. So I ask you to consider that, okay? Also, I'd like to say that we went through a long process hiring, trying to hire a football coach. And Evony, I want to thank you, because you really did an exceptional job. And I'd like to thank Mr. Alper, and Ms. Merklinger, and Bill Keigho, and Mr. Rawls. And I know I'm missing people, but anybody else that was on those two committees, because it was really thorough. It was the most thorough interview process I've ever been a part of. And Evony, I thank you for that. You really made it a fair, honest, decent process. And I know we have the right man, okay? Because he's not only a great football coach, he's a great young man. And the first way I judge people is, would I want my son or daughter playing for a coach like this? And I can unequivocally say yes. He's that type of young man. And then finally, I have to give two shout-outs real quick, and it's not on the agenda. Our girls' basketball team put a game. First time in school history, we won a championship. And I couldn't be there, I was at the regions. And then the other thing, I just want the board to know, we had an intersquad scrimmage with the fencing team on Saturday. And I am telling you, it was fantastic. They had two hours of competition against one another, and we're ready for a full-fledged team next year. And I'd like to thank Serge for that, and I'd also like to thank Rob Lomorello, our faculty advisor, that would have... I only wish you could have seen the improvement from the first couple of days I went till the end. It was really great, and the kids were fantastic, and everybody had a great time. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Wendell Simpson, Hillside Avenue. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Bly spoke of as far as the check signatures for an official. I'm an NJSA official, and other districts that has the policy of signing two checks or whatever, sometimes it takes us two to three months to get paid, and we put in, you know, long hours at a meet, and we have to wait three months to get paid. Whereas, it's been our experience at West Orange, and there's a couple other schools out there that don't have the double signature, we're able to get paid right then and there for an honest day's work. So, you know, I don't know how much, you know, leeway you have to, what he asks as far as the, for officials, but I think it would really help us a lot to be able to get paid at the meet instead of waiting three months, because usually, they have to go to the board, the board has to sign off, then by the time they mail it to us, like I said, it's about three months. So I appreciate if you could work with him regarding that for officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, Seven Crystal Ave. It seems that we have an issue with the funds and how they're being delivered, and who's writing the checks, and whether they're being written and signed for. But there wasn't a number of money amount of how much has been distributed without having the proper authorization from anyone on the board, or Mr. Calavano, or anybody in any of these buildings. Do you have that number, or is that part of the audit as well, too, to know how much money has been taken out of the accounts? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Derek Tandy. Been a resident here in West Orange for the last 14 years. Before that, I was a resident of Newark, and my old school was Shabazz High School. So I was able to watch and see the growth of Coach Grant while he...
the same way he would take care of every other student at this school. I've seen him at Irvington, and how he turned around the program, not only turning around their wins and losses, but also turning around the atmosphere at the school. The feeling of the students' achievement, and then also getting them to think beyond just high school. I watched him go to my school, Shabazz, and a program that was going down and had been down for a couple of years. I saw him bring it not only back, but they won two state titles, which we had never done before. And again, he took students that maybe before he got there may not realize their potential, but once he was there, a lot of students that I know personally are now at colleges, whether it's junior college or four-year college, that may have never thought about it before. I believe not only will he bring to our school a winning program, but I believe that he also will bring to our school a winning atmosphere, not only for the players, but for the community and for the other students. So, I hope that you guys take the recommendation and understand that we are getting not only one of the better coaches in the state, but also one of the better people. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gerard Eman. I live fifty-five Watson Avenue. I'm glad you're going to hire a new coach, but also, you need to support the coach in all ways. He needs support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Ms. Mendez.
Regarding student activities, when you hear the recommendations from the auditors, it doesn't mean that every instance it occurred. When they come in, they do a sample. Of that sample, they'll test each item to make sure everything's attached or signed off properly. With checks, it's easy to see, because we get the bank statement images of the checks that are there. They scan them to see if there's two signatures on all the checks. So, I don't want anybody leaving here thinking that, you know, every single check that's being written out of the high school account doesn't contain two signatures, or all the documentation is missing. It's just a sample of those items. For the athletics, it was about ninety-three thousand dollars spent added to that account last year.
Do you want to add anything more?
The only thing I would add is that signatures and approvals are control aspects. They're not necessarily quantitative in nature, and you would never outsource to a third party to make sure your controls are in place. Obtaining proper signatures and approvals is something that would have to be monitored internally. The bank would not be responsible for the controls. So, it's important that... you have to have these controls, otherwise, that's when you could have improprieties. If you only have one person signing checks, that's how you get into situations where people don't do things that they should not be doing with those checks, so.
Anything else? Okay. I'm going to thank everyone for your comments. May I have a motion for personnel, items one through four, with an addendum to number three, to change the start date from June ninth to June ninth or sooner.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Would one of you like to second?
Ladies first. I'll be the second.
Thank you.
Mr. Calafano. I'm sorry, any discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to say that, first of all, I appreciated the comments of those who came up to the mic to talk about Coach Grant. And I had some... and the questions that I submitted as part of his interview process, and then upon meeting him, there's several things that impressed me. Many things that impressed me. I mean, first of all, the record stood for itself. Two-state champions, fifteen playoff births, Essex County Coaches Hall of Fame, Coach of the Year, NJ.com 2014, and more. Sixteen out of seventeen years of winning seasons. But the winning in football, that was important. But what really impressed me more, or as much, is listening to him talk about the development of our kids, and putting academics first, where kids have to come with a daily report. And the goal is three point oh or above, because as he puts it, three point oh opens the door. Or the idea of taking a football team on college tours, so that kids can envision themselves there, that you could be here, this can be you, and that it's so much more about football. Football's a means to an end, but that it's about the education. Or listening to him talk about how to, you know, how he would engage parents, and how he... and the development of... and the development of the kids from early on, and that kind of sense of partnership and a sense of family. Or knowing that his program had a hundred percent college acceptance rate. I mean, these are the things that matter. Our students are student athletes. So, if we can help them be better students, be successful as students, and win as athletes, wow. I mean, that's really the hope, that's the dream, and I was just really impressed by the sense of character and where the values were placed with Mr. Grant. Thank you.
All right. So, I will say that as a sports person, I know a lot of focus is on which way I'm going on this. So, I will just say that I want to thank Mr. Mazzakis, Coach Mazzakis, for his time and effort that he put in with our players and teams. It is not an easy thing to do. Coaching itself, whether volunteer or paid, is very stressful, and it's also rewarding. So, I want to just thank him and recognize him for what he did for our program across the board. And I just want to say that with Darnell, I have very high expectations, and I look forward to seeing how he shows up on the field with our teams. So, looking forward to seeing how that works.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes. What impressed me most with Mr. Grant was his passion. He shared with us that he has children. I'll let him tell you how many he has. But he spoke just as passionately about his own family as he did about his players. And for me, that's what's important. It's not about the win, it's about growing and developing young men on and off the field. So, I welcome him.
Sure. This was a very comprehensive process. I believe this is the first time we've done, we've hired a coach this way. And I know Ms. Mendez can probably speak to the various levels, but I'm also very impressed with Coach Grant. I've been hearing a lot about Shabazz for years. Haven't been to Shabazz game in a long time, but my brother has always raised about how great they are. And from looking at all the information that was submitted and hearing from the committee, he was overwhelmingly the choice for every level. I want to agree with Ms. Triggs Scales about his passion, and one thing that stood out for me with that, too, was his sense of family. All the student athletes are members of his family, and I know I did my own research. He gives kids rides home from school, especially the kids that are in harm's way. One young man, I believe, he was with another friend who was assaulted, and so he was afraid to go home, and the coach made sure he took him home every single day from school. So, that spoke to me. Also, his mother, apparently, is an amazing cook, and cooks for the entire football team at Shabazz before every game. So, we're looking forward to some great home-cooked meals from Mrs. Grant. So, I don't know if he's going to tell her that just yet.
She's part of the team.
But we have a healthy appetite in West Orange, so we're all looking forward to partaking in that meal and becoming a part of the family. So, welcome to West Orange. We're very passionate about football here, and I guess you'll learn that soon. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and echo my colleagues' comments and those from the audience on both the process and the person. I believe this is really going to be the beginning of a really fantastic new chapter for West Orange football. And with that, Mr. Calafano, let's vote.
So, we're moving one through four, because you pulled number five, correct?
Correct.
Ma'am, Mr. Calafano, I have one more. I'd like to congratulate Donna Cochier on retirement, twenty-three years of service; Christine Maserari, forty years of service; and Rachele Feliciano, fifteen years of service. They're all retiring, and we thank them for their dedication to our students and to our community. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Wordakai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez, you had something?
Yes, so first, congratulations to Mr. Grant for being appointed the head football coach of the West Orange schools. Thank you to our board. I'm going to ask Mr. Grant to come forward while I just read some things here. Mr. Grant, forty-six, joins us after nine years as head coach at Shabazz High School, where he was named New Jersey Coach of the Year in 2014. He was inducted into the Essex County Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 2015. He was named NAACP's 2017 Sportsman of the Year, and was named one of New Jersey's fifty winningest active head coaches in 2018. He led Shabazz to outscore opponents 500 to 69, delivered their first undefeated season in more than five decades, and delivered two state championship crowns and three state championship appearances in five years. We hear many quotes about you, Mr. Grant, as we heard all of your references, really commend you not only for being a quality football coach, but a man of integrity, and one who really serves as a wonderful role model for all of your males. And so then, we are very proud to have you come onboard to be part of our team. Something that we said out there was, a good coach can change a game, but a great coach can change a life, and so that we're hoping you do that for all of our kids. So, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank this board, I guess our board, my board, for choosing me. I'm really excited about working with our young people. They say first impressions are last impressions. I'm just so impressed by the young people. Boys, stand up, boys, please. Stand up. Two thousand... Yeah, yeah, come on here, what? Can I do more? All right, you guys, sit down. Sit down, guys, thank you. See, in 2019, there's a bunch of things you can do. You can be on your phone, you can be playing Fortnite, you can be talking to a girlfriend, you can be studying, hopefully. And you guys chose to come out here tonight and take stock in your athletic future. I mean, that's something that's not I will ever forget, that's something I'm glad to see, and if this is indicative of the kind of energy and the commitment and the focus that we're going to have, I can't wait to get started. But, let me say this. To build, to build a great program, it's going to take a lot of hard work, it's going to take sacrifice, it's going to take dedication, we're going to talk about pace, practice, accountability, commitment, and excellent. You'll be hearing me say it in your sleep, pace, 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 pace. They can't match our pace. So, again, please, I have some of my assistant coaches. Guys, stand up, please. There's just a few of the guys that are going to be coming to work with you guys. I mean, I don't want you guys to have business to have, real business to conduct, so I want to get off here as quick as I can. But again, I'm so happy to come to West Orange. I think we're a sleeping giant, and I just can't wait. Again, I want to thank our superintendent, Mr. Bly, Mr. Moore, the principal, and everyone here, because this is a process, it's something, it's not just a high to coach, and, okay, I turn my back, this is a process, we're going to do it together. You know, they say success happens through togetherness, and we're going to be together, we'll be one, football community, and hopefully, really soon, a football family. My mom can't wait to come and cook.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, I need a motion for item B, curriculum and instruction, numbers one through five.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calafano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Wordakai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
All right, next, finance. May I have a motion for finance, special services, number one through three, and business office, numbers one through ten.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Calafano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Wait, hang on.
Oh, I can vote, Mr. Calafano.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Continue, sorry.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, with standing for the PO for me.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Wordakai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
And may I have a motion for reports, numbers one through two?
I'll motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Wordakai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
And may I have a motion for reports, numbers one through two?
I'll motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Wordakai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, public comment on any topic of interest to you that you'd like to speak to us about. You can come to the microphone again, three minutes, any topic, just let us know your name and address. And again, if you think you need some follow-up, please just fill out your information on that clipboard over there.
Jason Lamont Jackson, thirty-four Sunnyside Road. Glad to see everybody out. Actually, congratulations to Coach Grant. First time seeing him, we haven't met officially, but I do want to take the opportunity to welcome you here, I'm the head track and field coach. And if anybody watches any of the national championships on television, the positions that are played, the majority of them do what? Run track and field. So, I am so happy that he's here. I know the coaches, the track coaches at Shabazz very well, when I was at Columbia, and now here at West Orange, and they've always had some quality relays, and I'm hoping that we get some guys out to run, so that we can match with some of the other programs, and not just take them to them in the middle distance of the distance. So, welcome aboard, and can't wait to get a chance to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Mr. Grant, and it's so nice to see all the students here. I just want to thank the board for getting back to me, my emails, and the student liaisons. Thank you so much. I emailed everyone about what I spoke about at the last meeting, which was a request that our district implement real anti-bias training for all teachers, administrators, and staff, some cultural competency. I know, as I said last meeting, that Livingston recently did a two-day undoing racism program that I hear was really successful. And as I said last week, I come to this with the humility of being a white educator myself who's learned from these kinds of trainings, and, you know, we're all on our walk and learning as we go. So, I just was curious, because I got such positive response from all of you, both at the last meeting and from my emails, what specifically has been done to kind of move this forward? One thing that was mentioned last week is, as this comes up, and, you know, we just really want to make sure that this gets implemented in a real way. So, I was wondering if there was any budgetary money set aside for this kind of training, what kind of research has been done, and if the board could just speak specifically to that. I think this is something that would be really important for our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Mr. Almanias Vining, one eighty-six Forest Hill Road. I was brought here today out of the concern about the aspects of cultural competency and implicit bias. And as an educator in high school, that's taught high school for twenty-three years, and as someone that sits on the working committee for the American Psychological Association in dealing with health disparities for especially children of color, I want to make sure that we emphasize how important this is, especially when we look at statistics that young men of color are suspended and disciplined at twice the rate of their white classmates with the same transgression. The fact that we need to train our teachers in understanding not just bias, implicit bias, and racial microaggressions, but also how to deal with children that may be suffering from traumas, especially post-traumatic stress disorders, and not looking at that as a school discipline issue. And this is critical for all of our teachers, because the reality is, is that within both the graduate schools of education, as well as our secondary, post-secondary schools of education, implicit bias, cultural competency is not a part of these curriculums. Okay? It is not a part of these curriculums. It is important that we move forward in philanthropy and in non- the last meeting and from my emails, what specifically has been done to kind of move this forward? One thing that was mentioned last week is this, this comes up, and, you know, we just really want to make sure that this gets implemented in a real way. So I was wondering if there was any budgetary money set aside for this kind of training, what kind of research has been done, and if the Borg could just speak specifically to that. I think this is something that would be really important for our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Mr. Almanias Vining, 186 Forest Hill Road. I was brought here today out of the concern about the aspects of cultural competency and implicit bias. And as an educator in high school, that's taught high school for 23 years, and as someone that sits on the working committee for the American Psychological Association in dealing with health disparities for especially children of color, I want to make sure that we emphasize how important this is, especially when we look at statistics that young men of color are suspended and disciplined at twice the rate of their white classmates with the same transgression. The fact that we need to train our teachers in understanding not just bias, implicit bias and racial microaggressions, but also how to deal with children that may be suffering from traumas, especially post-traumatic stress disorders, and not looking at that as a school discipline issue. And this is critical for all of our teachers, because the reality is, is that within both the graduate schools of education, as well as our secondary, post-secondary schools of education, implicit bias, cultural competency is not a part of these curriculums. Okay? It is not a part of these curriculums. It is important that we move forward in philanthropy, in the nonprofit sector, amongst many foundations, amongst many researchers. This is happening. What I would recommend is the following. I can also offer services from the American Psychological Association. Also, you can look at scholars such as Dr. Wisdom Powell, the Association of Black Psychology, Dr. Sean Joe, Dr. Oscar Babbin, Dr. Howard Stevenson, everybody, our foremost experts in this sector that can also offer this training. I also heard, along with the implicit bias in the training for teachers, staff, administrators, board of ed, is the importance of teacher recruitment. Our teachers must reflect the diversity that exists within the school. I am one of only 2% of African-American males that are within the teaching sector. I am at Piscataway High School. I am one African-American male out of 11 of 167 teachers. Trust me when I say, over 21 years, I have a total understanding of the impact that not just diversity, but the ability to relate to your student body does play a role. I think we can be aggressive, not just with our colleges and universities, but with HBCUs in terms of recruitment. The last thing I want to state, and it's a matter of professional courtesy here, Ms. Merklinger, you, and I'm going to bring this up, because I think it's important for our students that are here to understand. You related to, responded to the new, our new coach, Mr. Grant, as Darnell by his first name. I have an issue with that. I think professional courtesy should always be given when we're in a professional setting, and his name is Mr. Grant. I'm not trying to cause any issue here, but I think it's important to set the proper role and respect for all of our colleagues here in a professional setting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robyn Isurles, 22 Yale Terrace. I wanted to also welcome Mr. Grant to the West Orange community. I just had a very quick question, I understand, given on the calendar that tomorrow, I think you have the interviews with the superintendent search firms, if I have that correct. If you can just let us know if you know a timeline, once whatever is decided tomorrow night, how that moves forward, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. At the last election, I know there was a lot of talks about restorative practices and how some of these things and initiatives were going to be brought up. Still haven't heard anything about that just yet. I know that some studies show that one suspension for any student increases their chance of dropping another school by 40%, and that it continues to increase every single time after that, and if they get suspended once, the likelihood that they'll get suspended again is very, very, very high. So I just wanted to know where we stand on that, and how are we going to incorporate that in the coming months or the next school year? In addition to that, I also want to know about the $93,000, was that correct? Was that the number? Could you elaborate a little bit more as to if it was like one school, or if that's like a lump sum from everywhere? That's about it, thank you.
Joe McAluso, 39 Valley Way. I'm a 43-year veteran of West Orange, and I spent 35 years teaching high school English at Monmouth High School. I came last board meeting because I had read in New Jersey Spotlight, February 15th article about diversity, and I was pleased to see that that topic came up at the board meeting. But I wasn't really prepared to speak, I had read the article quickly, I came here. But I've had a lot of experience with teacher training and the issues of staff recruitment. As I suspect you well know, by 2024, school boards in New Jersey are going to be required with the first, with the teachers, with, with four years of less experience have to reflect the student population. Now, that's going to charge this board with the need to have a definite plan for hiring teachers of color. And I'd like to know what plan you have in place at this point. Do you have an affirmative action officer, affirmative action committee? Because one of the things I know from 35 years of teaching is that we can have all kinds of good ideas, but if those ideas are not institutionalized, or not put as part of the system, they will pass with the individual people. And I'd like to remind you that that came out at the last board meeting, where people were saying, well, we used to do this, or we did this once before, but it's not happening now, and we don't know why. And I suggest to you that having been part of a national program for seven years, with seven different states, seven universities, and seven teacher unions, on the topics of teacher training and staff development, that was one of the glaring things we saw in each of the seven states, and that was if the ideas we were working on were not institutionalized, they got lost. And so I certainly urge you to work in that direction. And you could come up with some excuses as to why you might not be able to meet this goal. For example, 14, I think it's 16% of New Jersey schools, 16% of teachers in New Jersey are teachers of color. However, 18% of our teachers nationwide are teachers of color. And you don't have to look too far to see that some school districts can succeed in hiring teachers of color. East Orange, 75% of their teachers are teachers of color. Irvington High School, Irvington Schools, 66% of their teachers are teachers of color. And so we know it can be done, and I certainly hope that you'll be working strongly to achieve that goal.
Thank you.
One, I lost some time. I just want to say that it does work for staff and for students, and it's important for you to know that it works very much for staff, and that's a goal that's not so easy to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Ruffo, 4 Overlook Avenue. I'm here to speak more about allergies, my children who have allergies, and I'm advocating for them. And a woman in my allergy group recently shared a story, and she wants it to be shared with as many as possible, so I wanted to share it today, just to show you how complicated food allergies are, and how many different ways an allergic reaction can present itself. This is her words. My daughter recently had a controlled tree nut challenge at her allergist. She went into anaphylaxis during the trial. It looked nothing like I expected it to look. First, my daughter was fed approximately 1/10 of a cashew for her challenge. Now, this is done in a hospital setting, so that they can try and outgrow their allergy. Her first symptom was simply itchy ears within the five minutes. She was perfectly happy and playing, and then she started complaining of a bellyache. Then she had itches all over, no rash was present at this point. They decided to administer the first epinephrine shot, because she was exhibiting two symptoms, belly pain and itching, and then they also gave her oral Zyrtec. The shot calmed everything for about 10 minutes, and after the 10 minutes was up, she really started itching a lot more. Upon inspection, her entire body was quickly breaking out in severe hives before our very eyes, then huge hives, and then they gave her a steroid. She was still playing and not showing any signs of real distress. Around five minutes later, there was a big coughing fit. We couldn't hear her breathing really hard or wheezing at all, so they called the nurse. She came in, she checked, she listened with the stethoscope. And again, this is a controlled place with nurses and doctors. She said that she was wheezing and was tight in her chest, and amazing, she was still playing, just annoyed with her itchy hives. And then it all changed. They laid her down quickly, and she started blacking out. They gave her an albuterol treatment and another shot of epinephrine. An IV was started with a dose of solomedrol, which is another form of steroid. She was lethargic and out of it for about 10 minutes before she came around again. She had to be watched for many hours afterwards, because, and this is a super scary part for allergy parents, that anaphylaxis can return in a second round, just as severe as the first, in the next hours, just out of the blue. Anyways, it was nothing like I expected to see. It snuck on so unexpectedly and quietly. I expected to see choking, gasping, wheezing, and her grabbing at her chest or neck area. I expected the entire ordeal to be very fast and obvious and dramatic, and actually, it was very silent. So imagine if this was a field trip, on a bus, outside during recess, which always happens after they eat, or during an assembly, or a special where they're being transferred between teachers. So to me, I just feel like every staff member needs to be trained on all of these different ways to see it. So my question is just more of, what is the plan for the allergy awareness committee and the updating of the allergy management plan? And I understand we're in the process of, you know, hiring a new superintendent, but there really is no time to waste, and we have to start now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Winneal Simpson, Hillside Avenue. I just want to make a statement. First, I'd like to welcome Coach Grant to the community, West Orange here. My son, I live in town, but my son doesn't attend West Orange school system, or he did up until eighth grade. But I want to reiterate when Coach Grant said that he needs your support, and to the players, it is a lot of work. My son, he plays at a school that, his first year there, he went to the Meadowlands, or MetLife. I just told my aide. But it's a lot of work, and you definitely need the support of the board, the school system, and the community. My son, he gets up at 5:00 in the morning, he goes, he drives an hour and a half to school, gets home at 8:00 at night, he eats, lives, everything is football. The only time that he has for himself is snow days and holidays. You know, it's a commitment. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, weightlifting. Wednesday, Saturday, skill training. Then on Sundays, he has speed training, and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, he has yoga for stretching and flexibility. But all that came together with all the hard work that he put in, and when those kids walk into the MetLife, it's nothing like that experience you can see in the kid's face, where it all came together, and to be actually changing in the Jets locker room, in the Giants locker room. That's an experience that they take with them forever. So it will require a lot of work, but trust me, when you get to the end game, that's a life experience, because it's not a lot of students or athletes that make it to that arena. And once you get there, that's something that you'll take with you through the rest of your life. So I just wanted to say, or reiterate, that he will need your support from the community and everybody, and again, welcome to the West Orange.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brad Henderson, 15 Dartmouth Road. I'd like to congratulate the board for all the work they did to hire our new coach, and congratulations to Coach Grant. I was here about a month ago, and there was some talk about, well, the bubble had just gone up. And we've hired our new coach, and one of the most important tools he has at his disposal here is the bubble. And I just wanted to, just up here to, you know, ask if you could give us an update, because I know it's up, but you were putting out a contract to get it finished off, and really, you know, time's a-wastin', the sooner that we can get this going, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Ms. Domeniz?
Okay, I'm going to start with our diversity and cultural proficiency questions and/or comments. We are continuing to work through building a process and/or committee to address the areas and the issues that we need to. So our structure will be a diversity committee that is composed of four subcommittees. One will really address hiring practices and building a pipeline, so that we can take a look at our staffing. A second is going to look at curriculum and instruction, making sure that our curriculum really addresses all of the historical and literary and contributions that have been made throughout our society, our instructional resources to be inclusive of our students, so that when they are learning in their classrooms, when they are reading, they can see themselves reflected. Another area, the third subcommittee, will deal with training, not just, and I think this is a conversation that we're having as we build these committees, not just training where it's a workshop, and you go one day or a two-day workshop, and then you come back, and you're expected to really relate, right? It really needs to be an ongoing effort to talk about cultural competency, proficiency, again, not just to understand differences, but be able to move beyond tolerance and acceptance, and really understand community, and how do we build community, respect, value each other for who we are. And then the fourth subcommittee will be specifically designed to address our affirmative action plans, our comprehensive equity plans, developing objectives and goals, and then present those to the board. We have, we plan to dedicate next year, all of our professional development in two areas. One will be around assessment, and the other one will be about, around all of these issues of diversity. So we will focus on for the whole of the year. We have built into our budget $50,000 to provide training throughout the year. We have begun to assemble surveys. We've reached out to FDU, to the associations that do the undoing racism training, the cultural competency training, so we're assembling all of that. And we will come to the board, again, I know this takes time, but we need to pull, build a plan that's comprehensive before we come to the board. I don't want to piecemeal it, this is very important work. It's work that will be sustained work, as the gentleman spoke at the end about sustainability and making sure that it doesn't disappear over time. So that really is where we are specifically. With regard to restorative, yes?
We already have an affirmative action officer in place, can you speak to that?
So we have two affirmative action officers that are in place. Elizabeth Veniziano is for curriculum, so that's really to look at, where is affirmative action in curriculum? And then we have an affirmative action officer, I believe it's Cheryl Butler, to deal with anything that has to do with staff. With regard to restorative practices, Dana Peert conducted professional development for both teachers and for students. She had 25 students present, where those teachers and students came together to look at restorative practices, how we're going to plan for that for next year. They looked at our curriculum and developed sample lessons in order to embed them. And then last week, I also met with another staff member who is going to collaborate with that effort to put together an action plan for professional development that will be embedded into our practices next year, so that we are prepared to implement everything that we're required to by the state. With regard, Ms. Ruffo, to the allergies, we're beginning to have those conversations, so that's going to take just a little while to put that in place, but we'll be reaching out to the different parents shortly to say who would like to participate on those committees. And then I'll ask Mr. Calabana to talk to us about the bubble.
The interior of the bubble, we actually had to go out for a public bid. The bid is coming due this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. We'll open them, read the results, and hopefully, we'll be able to appoint or hire a contractor to begin work at our next board meeting. And going back to Mrs. Salinas's question regarding the high school account, $93,000, $93,832 was expended from the athletic account the entire year. Basically, that's mostly officials being paid, ticket takers, scoreboard operators, entrance fees, and when I say officials, it's all levels. I can tell you tomorrow on how many checks were actually written out of that account to make up that $93,832.
Just in terms of the superintendent search process, the actual timeline really comes once we've established who the vendor's going to be, because everyone has their own internal process that all aims for the same final date, which is July 1st. So once we've got that selected, we should have a better sense of exactly where we are and on which specific dates which events will occur in terms of surveys going out, ads being placed, listening sessions and input sessions being conducted, and so on. So we should have a better sense of that next time we talk. All right. Reports from board members, we'll start down with Merklinger.
Sure. So I do want to clear up any misunderstanding. I wasn't 100%, I was 99.9% sure everyone was going to vote for Mr. Grant to become our coach, and I kind of jumped in on a little bit, because in our youth sports And I kind of jumped in on a little bit because in our youth sports program, we consider ourselves a family. And in our families, we go by first names. And so I do apologize, that was not meant as disrespect. That was actually a welcome to the family without officially being able to say, "Welcome to the family." So now I can say, "Mr. Grant, Coach Grant, Darnell, welcome to our West Orange football family. We are happy to have you. We are looking forward to great things. I look forward to seeing you at our youth sports games and working with that program as well." So again, Coach Grant, congratulations and thank you for accepting the position. With that, I also want to congratulate our color guard, our JV and varsity color guards. They took first place at the Madawan Show this past weekend, so congratulations to them. Our basketball team has their banquet this Thursday night. Mr. Fitzgerald is hosting a stream night challenge at Edison on Wednesday night at 6:30. I encourage everyone to go out and check that out. Sounds like there's going to be a lot of fun things planned for the evening. This past Friday, I had the opportunity and pleasure of reading Dr. Seuss books to Mr. Oakley's fifth-grade class over at Washington School, and that was a lot of fun. Thank you, Mrs. DeMayo, for inviting me and including me in that day. I also got to check out some of the work that our kindergartners did there for 100 days of school. They're pretty creative, so it was really nice to see. And I also just want to announce, for those that have not seen it, to kick off our baseball season, our youth sports team, so the PAL, Mountain Top, and along with the Mountaineers of West Orange High, we're hosting Mountaineer Movie Night on the 30th. We're going to show movie 42 in honor of its 100th anniversary of Jackie Robinson. And we have some games planned. We have a sporting goods store coming in to do some bat demos and offer up helmets and batting gloves and things that are all West Orange logoed. And so we encourage everyone to come out, having the time. It'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Tarnoff Cafeteria on the 30th. I think that's about it for now.
Keep it short. Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Thank you. First, just wanted to make some comments on some of the folks who came up to the mic. In terms of supporting the coach, that burden of responsibility is going to fall on all of us. We as a board, certainly on our administration, you as a community, PAL as our pipeline. And I think that West Orange has a huge opportunity right now to truly come together as a family. Now, having been on the Mountain Top Board and coached at Mountain Top and having known a lot of great PAL parents, I know that sometimes, because parents are always passionately involved, that sometimes our passions of the moment may take us away from a larger vision. And sometimes, like when Mountain Top and PAL came together with baseball and softball, that was brilliant. That was a moment. But it took like, how many years to make? Okay. So we don't have that amount of time. We need to come together as a community and we need to do it now. We need to be committed to our coach, need to be committed to our players, need to make sure we're listening to our parents. And, but this is a huge opportunity and congratulations again to Coach Grant for accepting. Ms. Ruffo, thank you for continuing to bring forth the allergy information. I was a very sickly asthmatic child. My big goal every day was to be out, to go out and be able to play ball and act like I could actually breathe. So I understand. And one of the things I suggest is, and suggested for administration, not only form a committee. Committees are great, but sometimes things kind of get lost in committee. If we could get an analysis from nursing, from our nursing staff, and from our PE health teacher, because those are two areas where we're addressing health and wellness on a daily basis, both through education and through actual interventions, I think that that may help to guide us and to guide the committee as well. But keep bringing it. What you brought was very comprehensive and something we need to, we need to address. Diversity and cultural competency. I am, never before, until this past year, have I heard so many parents, so many knowledgeable parents, and parents who really invested, white, black, every color, come forth to the mic over the course of the past year and talk about diversity. Let's just talk about it. But I mean, really get into what's necessary to institutionalize it, to make this a reality beyond simply having a diverse population, but to make it a philosophy, to make it a practice. And I have to give major kudos to our acting superintendent because while we're still in very venecian stages of this, I think you've presented the most comprehensive vision thus far for what components need to be in place to make this machine actually move ahead. But one of the things I will caution, and I say this as a diversity professional, I've been doing multicultural marketing, diversity and cultural competency-related communications for on and off over 30 years, for Ford, for Pepsi, for Quest Diagnostics, for a lot of different companies, including diversity workforce development in conjunction with nonprofits like Inroads and diversity programs at UNCF. And the changing of culture to realize that we even need this, because one of the things that happens is, I think, our culture's in a little denial because we have a naturally diverse population and because everyone pretty much gets along and there's a lot of love in West Orange, we take for granted, "Well, what is all this bias training? Do we really need that?" So I have to tell you, as a professional, yes, we have great teachers, great administrators. 99% of them, there are no issues with. But just as they had to be educated on how to educate, they have to be educated on how to be more sensitive sometimes to different cultures and to understand the cultural nuances, or to understand how it affects learning and education. This has been a big, this is a revolution in education, it's a revolution in healthcare, but cultural competency. The other aspect has to do with accountability. And that's an area that's always tough. And these are difficult conversations to have. As a parent in West Orange, while the situations have been very, very few, thank goodness, once again, 99.9% of our teachers are amazing, I've had with my own son encounter a situation where he and other black boys or Hispanic boys were literally singled out. I've heard from parents, situations in different classes, where their own child, a white child, came to a white parent and said, "Mommy, do you know what my teacher said?" You know, so there are instances out there. These are the extreme ones. But it says, it's a wake-up call to say that these are things we need to address. Then there are the more subtle ones where we just need to have a better, we need to develop a better understanding of each other's cultures and how that affects, and to, you know, embrace the diversity. Really quickly, I just want to say, congratulations to our girls' basketball team. It is, as Mr. Bly pointed out, that's a first. That's a huge first, winning the Essex County Championship. We had a hard loss, a very tough fought loss in the state tournament, but I got to say, the girls fought hard, they still stepped up. Maya actually got her 1,000th rebound. She'd already gotten 1,000 points for her career here, right? She hit her, got her 1,000th rebound in that game. And poor Kylie, Kylie's one of our stars, one of our superstars. She was trying to play through bronchitis, one of the toughest kids I know. And she just went out there for the team. She didn't complain and she was trying to do everything she could. You had some seniors stepping up there, like Ebony. You had some other folks stepping up like McKenzie. But the team played really hard, it was a tough loss, but that's okay. They still brought back a first for West Orange. Boys' basketball is also, they also had a very good season and they're improving constantly. And Coach Damon Cowens is doing great things. I look forward to, I'm going to stop stopping by the banquet this week just to say thank you for what they're doing. Big shout out to our hockey team. Our hockey team, you know, has come out of, it's taken some time in development, parents in conjunction with Mountain Top parents who helped to develop a feeder program. But it's been a lot of parent commitment as well as player commitment. And we're saying goodbye to some seniors who've really made a big difference for us in a lot of ways, from team spirit to team play. Davy Campbell had his jersey retired. He's one of the top scorers in the state and is definitely the top scorer in our school's history. Then you had, he and Zach Weingold were co-MVPs. We had shout out, we had awards given to Chris Bagnolo, Trevor Levine, Kalen Monroe, Ben Raymond, and Daniel Feinblack, of course, as our valedictorian, got the academic award as well, the Scholar-Athlete Award. And then our team managers, these young ladies, very committed, Elena Tarmi and Jordan Raymond. And for me, as a dad with a senior, it's been an honor and a pleasure to watch these kids develop into some really fine young adults. And just want to say, that's been pretty awesome. That, oh, we did have a letter, and maybe this is something you can speak to Ms. DeMendes. I'm not going to read the whole letter because we used a lot of time, but from Eric Fritsch, who's inquired about our commitment. He talked about the governor's commitment to pre-K and inquired about our commitment to pre-K. We all know what the stats say. So if that's something, he wanted to, he asked that if I could ask in the board meeting to just talk about where we are on that, so I'll, I'm sorry? I don't want to read the whole thing. Okay, Senate teachers separately, I wasn't sure. Okay. So anyway, that's it. Just wanted to put his question out there. Thank you.
All righty. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to highlight that we're talking a lot about diversity and I've been talking about it during my campaign. And just recently, the vice president of the NJEA, the New Jersey Education Association, just testified before the Senate Education and the Senate Higher Education Committee. And he talked about the lack of diversity in New Jersey. It's an issue in our state in the educational workforce. And NJEA is rolling out efforts to address this. And also, as we talk about the diversity training for staff, I also want to commend our acting superintendent. I've been talking about the diversity committee for weeks now and so now we're getting more information about the structure. And we have so many community members who are resources, who are offering their assistance. And so I hope we're able to reach out to the community members. And then I want to share this. This is called 13 Things School Board Members Wish People Knew About Them. So everybody paying attention, there will be a test at the end. We're going to post this on our website. We all have copies of it. Oh, it's on our website. It went on today. But I'm going to go over it very briefly. So number one, we are the best-trained elected officials in the state. No other state official gets training like school board members. So we're very smart. You think? We get training all three years in topics such as policy, school finance, student achievement, labor relations, and school law. Secondly, we have to go through a criminal background check before taking office. Third, we have to adhere to a code of ethics. When we were sworn in, we have to keep our allegiance, we have to keep our confidentiality. And our goal is to make sure that the schools are well-run. Number four, we are legally required to go into executive session when we discuss certain matters. And you see that at the beginning of your agenda. The boxes are shaded, so those are the areas for each of our executive sessions that we are discussing. Five, we can't tell you the real reason that the teacher was non-renewed or the real reason that student got suspended. We just can't share that information. Under our code of ethics, we cannot do it. Number six, we're not the person to talk to if you have a problem with your child's teacher. None of us. We are not the ones. You should talk to your principal at your school, not board members. That's not why we're here. Number seven, at school board meetings, the public comment period is for the members of the public to comment, not engage in a discussion with board members. Number eight, and this one, I know you know, we don't get keys to the building. We don't have access. Number nine, and this one, we know very well, we do not get paid a salary. And this is what it says. More often than you'd think, we have to educate people about the fact that being a school board member is an unpaid gig. There are some school districts in some states, like Florida, Virginia, North Carolina, and California, that pay school board members, but not in New Jersey, not now, not ever. Did we know that? Not ever? Number 10, we only oversee one employee, and that is the superintendent. Number 11, one or two board members cannot enact new policies. And this is a very big one. We do not decide when school is closed for a snow day. That is the snow queen, our superintendent. We get, we get the call just before you do. We do, we are not part of that decision-making. And number 13, most of all, we take pride in the most satisfying part of our job, and that's having a lasting impact on the education of the children in our community and helping every child reach his or her full potential.
I'd like to also thank Ms. DeMendes for all our hard work on the diversity committee, and I'm looking forward to seeing your plan. But I do have one question. The members of the diversity committee that used to be, are those folks going to be invited back? Including Principal Hush? We sent him many times to various HBCUs to recruit. I know he particularly liked Howard University, so that's one question for you on that. What else? Mr. Viney, is he still here? I'm actually a member of the Equity Council for New Jersey School Boards Association, and your principal is on that committee with me, so we've been doing great work. Actually, our next committee meeting is this coming Monday. I don't know if you want to ask him if you can be a guest at that meeting? We would love to have you. And I'll reach out to see, on my end, if you could come and speak to us. We had the honor of attending the ice hockey banquet last week. President Alper, Mr. Robertson, and Ms. Triggs Gales, we had a very nice time. Ms. Merklinger, oh, I missed you. You came early, okay. So we all had a very good time. I believe this was my first ice hockey banquet, so it was really well-attended. I was really happy to see all the kids there. And of course, so many of the student athletes are on the honor roll, so that's wonderful. St. Patrick's Day, Ms. DeMendes covered that. That was very rainy and cold. Very cold. And a very short parade because we all went home pretty much afterwards. On March 14th, as some of you may know, I'm also the president of the Essex County School Boards Association. And on March 14th, I have the honor of presiding over the Third Annual Student Recognition Program for unsung heroines and heroes. Each year, the Essex County School Boards recognizes a senior from each of the county's high schools. The honorees are our schools, heroines and heroes, students who make outstanding contributions to their schools and communities but who are often overlooked by traditional student recognition guidelines. The first year we did this, we had about 30 students. Last year, we had 33 students and we're hoping to have more than that this year. Our attendees also include the nominees, students, families, school board members, district administrators and staff. And I'm hoping Ms. DeMendes can join us and bring a greeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
I won't keep people much longer. I just have one thing, which was Friday, of course, I think most of you probably saw on social media, that the full board and Ms. DeMendes were here for the press conference from Governor Murphy announcing our additional school aid for this year. You know, obviously, it's a long process to get to full state funding. The state's supposed to be kicking in $26 million a year. It's been 8-point-something for a really long time. Last year, that was finally addressed with the S-2 bill that got passed. That brought us up to 12.4, I think. This year, it's going to end up being about 13.9. So it's going to go up a little bit each year and we should hit our full $26 million in 2025, I think is the school year, 2025, 2026. So a lot of people to thank for everything they did to make that work. Senator Sweeney, the Fair Funding Action Committee, which we joined by a board resolution last year, which I think had a big impact on this. Our 27th district team, Governor Cody, Assemblyman McKinnon, Assemblywoman Jacey, and the governor, of course. So just want to thank all those people and thank all of you for being here. And that's it. And the finisher, he was here too, that's right.
Dr. Ruffelud.
Yes, he was. All right. With that, I need a motion to return to executive session where no action will be taken.
And we're going into executive session for number three, for legal advice regarding HIV and a board matter.
Any final comments from the liaisons, which I neglected? Sorry.
We just forgot to mention in the beginning, Cecina and I met with two representatives from Stonegate. Cecina and I met with two representatives from Stonegate to discuss security matters, and they just basically asked us how we felt, how we would react to different situations, if there was a shooter in the school, how we would open, how would we, how would we react to a stranger at the building, what's most convenient for us to get in and stuff like that. I think it was really beneficial, and they were trying to make safety their priority.
Great. Thank you. And I should mention, next board meeting will be held at 8:00 p.m. on March 25th, right here. All right, we have a motion for closed?
Make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, folks.